Okay, good evening. So today is Monday, June 3rd, 2024. We'll now call the City Council regular meeting to order at 6:37 PM. Item number two, our roll call of quorum. We do have a quorum of council. Item number three is our pledge. It will be led by Herman Rodriguez, Director of Economic Development.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number four are presentation of recognition. We have a presentation, Key to the City, for Coach Lloyd Banks and Thurgood Marshall High School. It'd be by myself, so I will come down. All right. Before I get to my spill, we have a special person who's here today that is going to also join me to speak. It is none other than our District 27 representative, Ron Reynolds. Please, sir.
Well, good evening, everyone, Mayor, council members. It's great to be here today. This is exciting, you all. I want to thank Mayor Ellicott and the city of Missouri City for recognizing our Marshall High School boys' state championship. Give it up, y'all. 5A champions. You all, Coach Banks, I'm proud that Marshall is in the Show Me City because these young men show up and show out on the track field like nobody else has. They are history makers. These are some amazing scholar athletes that is a treasure for our community. And Mayor, I want to thank you and council for this, but I hope our next stop, when we have session in Austin at the Capitol, we have to do this at the Capitol. So Mayor, you get this because we're not in session, but I, no, seriously, whenever we have state champions, this ain't no local district champion, and you all, I want you to know, if you win a state championship in Texas, man, it's like winning a national championship because Texas is competing against the best athletes. They say Texas, Florida, California, but when I look at those times, Texas is number one. So, Coach, I want to, Mayor, if you'll help me out here. I had a proclamation, but I want to get to the good stuff, and then you get to the even better stuff with the Key to the City. But I had a flag flown over our Capitol that I want to present to you on behalf of the state of Texas because, again, this ain't no District 27 state championship. This is a state of Texas Class 5A state championship. So on behalf of the state of Texas, as your state representative, it is my pleasure and privilege to present this flag for you on behalf of the outstanding young men that were competing. And I believe this is a record eighth. Is that right? How many? How many have we had? Nine. See, I wanted someone to say that. Nine, Stephanie. Nine state championships. That is amazing. And I think Fort Bend ISD should be very proud. I see the principal here. We want to make sure that the superintendent, the school board, gives Marshall the props that it deserves because you all are the shining stars of Fort Bend Independent School District. There are many other school districts that are jealous and envious when it comes to our boys and girls track team. So, well done. And finally, I want to present this official House resolution. This is one that I was waiting to present to you that actually is an official one that was signed by the Speaker of the House as well. So when they're official, they have a House resolution. So this one actually had to pass on the House floor. So this is presented to you, signed by your state representative, the Speaker of the House, and the Chief Clerk of the House. So I want to present this to you. This goes in the history books, y'all. This is an official resolution that will be marked in perpetuity in our legislative history in our archives, House Resolution 2186. So congratulations, Coach. And I think we should bring the principal up here as well for this official photograph. She is always amazing. It was great to be with Councilmember Bonney and Councilwoman Riley when we did the parade, running through Mo City at the parade with the mayor. But we're so proud that you all represent and your students, they show up in the Show Me City and show out across the state of Texas. So congratulations, and may God continue to bless you for a record tenth. Who's ready for a tenth state championship next year? We already claimed it. I thought, I said this when I handed the mic back over to Mayor. I thought when some of these speed demons, they graduated, they went on to college, and, you know, especially Arcane, H A, I said, man, I don't know if we gonna be able to duplicate this. And then they did it again, and then again, and again. So that's a testament to great coaching because you have to learn techniques because you can have the fastest and most talented athletes, but if they don't have form and technique and all that stuff, they still won't win championships. So that's not only a testament to the boys and the young men, but to the coaches, the trainers, everyone that participates to get them ready. So congratulations and God bless you. Thank you.
All right. So I understand that Coach Banks' family is here. Can you, can we have the family come up here, please? Come on. Yes. Yes. And Coach, as your family's here, it would not be fair for me to not recognize one person in our audience and have that person come up as well because I've never seen a cheerleader as much as this particular individual that who kept me on your stats as every season that you got going. It is none other than our proud resident of District B, Stephanie Brown. Come on up here. All right. So now this is my turn, right? So I'm going to say this, and we can hear this also. So if you know anything about three-peat, you know, the only few teams have been able to accomplish winning the three championships in a row. You have your Boston Celtics, you have your Chicago Bulls, that's my team, and you have your Lakers, you have your New York Yankees, Green Bay Packers, and of course, Houston Comets, right? That's right. And we have some more, but these are the main ones here. But I will, I want to add now that Missouri City's own Thurgood Marshall High School track team and field team, this has now become another three-peat in Missouri City. Congratulations. Coach, it is my great honor to present Key to the City to a remarkable individual who has led this team to nine victories. Yes, Coach Lloyd Banks of Thurgood Marshall High School has not only led his team to numerous victories in track and field, but has also instilled in his athletes the values of hard work, determination, and sportsmanship. Under your guidance, our young athletes have not only excelled in sports, but have also grown as individuals, ready to take on the challenges of the future. Coach, your dedication, your commitment, and passion for developing these young, talented have set a shining example for all of us right here in Missouri City. Today, we celebrate you. We celebrate your achievements and positive influence that you have had on countless of young lives right here, growing up in Missouri City. So it is with the great pride and gratitude that I present you with this Key to the City of Missouri City. This key resembles our appreciation for your outstanding service and our recognition of the legacy that you are building in City of Missouri City, and it is truly a legacy. I have no idea what that key opens, but you have that access to that key, which none of us do. So this is a true testament of congratulations to you. Typically, I, being a mayor now for three and a half years, have given such an honor to people that have gone above and beyond into sports stars, and I know former mayors have given to other musicians and history makers. But when Stephanie Brown had brought this up, I said, you know what? We have a hero in our own community who has done so much for the youngsters, and it needs a recognition of this type of recognition to give you the key amongst all the elite people that have gotten it. As you know, that's the highest thing that I, myself, as a mayor, and our council can give to anyone on a city level. So being as proud as I am, I wanted to give you this key. But as we do, I want the team, the members who are here, to come and make your way up. Come on up. Come on up. So as the team is making their way up, for the general public, I just wanted to let you know what our coach has done. I see that state championship. Thank you for bringing it. So they have seven boys' track and field championship and two girls' track and field championship. Most 40-point 4x100 relays in USA history for boys. And they are also the only school to run a sub 40.0 times in three different seasons. And if you know how hard that is, that is very difficult to do. Coach Lloyd Banks has produced 11, Ron, 11 consecutive seasons with a 4x100 relay to run under 41.0 seconds. He doesn't stop there. He's also the Coach of the Year for U.S. Track and Fields and Cross Country Coaches Association, and he's also Coach of the Year for Texas Track and Fields Coach Associations, and Houston Chronicle named him Coach of the Year, and Vibes Coach of the Year, I would say Fab or F A B? Fab. Coach of the Year, and also on the Coach of the Year for PVIO League, Coach of the Year. But he's also Coach of the Year for Thurgood Marshall High School, right here in Missouri City, right? So as they're here, I would also like to have our council members to come up here because they do this, we do this together. So every time we give a Key to the City, we come out here and make sure that we do this with you. To the principal, thank you for a wonderful job that you're doing, and especially with this team. Great, great job. Come on in, come on in. And now, as they're here, I do have a quick video. Can we, hold on one second, before we play it, Councilmember Bonney, can you hit that light, lights on that? I want you all to watch this. Let's get the sound up.
Everybody likes speed, you know? And you got to remember, the participation rate in track and field is high. I want to say this probably the most participated sport in Texas because you're going to have girls and you have boys. That's a lot of people that's, you know, that the eyes are on the sport. You know, we're one of those sports where we're kind of like banging on the door and saying, let us in. You know, we in Texas, so we know football is king. But we're there like, hey, give us a little time, give us a looksee, we're here.
Fort Bend Marshall, clear as day. Fort Bend Marshall is going to run away with this one. Look at that time, 3988.
You know, it's for eternity, you know, because we all know how tough it is to run a program, you know? It's very difficult, you know? At the end of the day, you want to see, you know, kids be successful. Let's, you know, we're teachers, you know? At the end of the day, that's, that's the number one priority, you know, development of the kids, man, seeing them be successful. This thing is just developing these kids, these babies, man, and they're walking away with great moments, you know?
Coach, come on up. Coach. So this is a real nice key. I have no idea what it opens, but it is for you. And it's presented to Coach Lloyd Banks, Thurgood Marshall High School Track and Field Team, by myself and City Council of City of Missouri City on June 3rd, 2024. And I want you to know this, that this resemblance at the fact that we have, to my knowledge, we have never done this for a local person of your magnitude, but this tells you that anybody and everybody can do a difference in the community, and we're so proud of you. And let this also resemble that anyone in Missouri City that has done what you have done with your work ethics and what you're doing can achieve a Key to the City, not only musicians and actors and all of that, but we have something called Community Local Heroes. With that, congratulations.
I'll be brief because I don't want to be crying on the mic and all that. First and foremost, I'd like to thank everybody who had a hand in developing our babies. Because at the end of the day, like I said, we're teachers. I always beat my chest and always flex that, I tell everybody, I come across, I have the greatest staff in the nation, you know? Yeah, we might, you know, tussle every now and then about the journey, but the destination is always the same. We want to make sure our kids are good, period. So, you know, from Ms. Brown, and, you know, we get on Dr. Sanders' nerves and so forth and so on, but at the end of the day, you know, because I know my priority are our kids. And that's, you know, I'm just a guy who like track along with everybody else here. But I would like to say thank you. I thank my kids for working tirelessly, you know? We all sacrifice, all of us, and it doesn't happen if we're not on the same pace. So again, thank you, I thank you guys for this honor. But again, I'll share with everybody here because, you know, it's a joint effort, and I appreciate it a lot. Thanks again.
And I just want to thank Fort Bend ISD, like as State Representative Ron Reynolds said, Fort Bend ISD. But I also want to bring up the principal because we have worked so closely, and I want you to say something about this.
Thank you all so much for this honor. Missouri City is a special place, not because of the goals, but the people in it. And so we have an absolutely wonderful staff, we have an absolutely wonderful community base, and when I say I truly appreciate everyone's support, not we work as a team to get this job done, and our kids are out here in the world doing amazing things. And so that is from the work of our staff, our parents trusting us with their kids, and a community that supports anything that we need to get done for our children. So I appreciate you all dearly. I thank you for your continued support, and I will definitely take this back to the representatives of Fort Bend ISD to share this special moment.
As I said it earlier in my opening, this would not be possible if not for the biggest cheerleader that we have and is also a resident of our city. So I just wanted Ms. Brown to say a few words, if she will, about what this means to her and how this meant. Come here.
I wasn't expecting this, but all I can say is, go Bulls! I'm so, so, so proud of all of the accomplishments of the track team, not only as athletes, but as students. And we always rise to the top, and I am so, so, so proud of you guys, all of you. We have a special community, a special school, a special principal, and we are family, y'all. So we got one saying at that school, if you take on one buff, you do what, y'all? All right now. Oh, thank, I want to thank you because I'm nobody, and you listen to me. And so I want to thank you for doing all of this. You know, I'm just a citizen, but I cried my heart out, put it out there, and you took it and you ran with it. I want to thank Mr. Horace because we're family now. We were on, we were texting each other like 11 o'clock at night, sending stuff. So thank you, guys, the whole city of Missouri City for all you do, the Show Me City.
We are going to take about literally five-minute recess real quick, if it's okay with my colleagues, to get some pictures for them to recess. Yes, sir. We're having recess, we'll be back in five minutes. So if you want to take pictures with the coach, you want to have, so we get some pictures with them and council.
First of all, we just want to say thank you. Stay up, guys, stay up, guys. You know, this is a special presentation for Coach Banks at the beginning. If y'all know Coach Banks, he don't like all this kind of stuff publicly, but he loves it, you know, because we work so hard, y'all. We've been at Marshall since the fall of 2010, a lot of battles. But at the end, it's all about the success of the kids. You know, this presentation at the beginning was about Coach Banks, but now we want to honor the young men that were here that actually ran. Like Banks say, all we do is run our mouth, but the kids run, all right? So we just want to have the young men to come up. Where, come on up to the front. Come on, drop it in the back. Come on. You know, one thing about it, winning on the track is fine, but we also have 100% of our young men, the seniors, are going, have got accepted in the school. Paul's going to Texas. Jay's going to U of H. Yeez going to Houston Christian, okay? And that's big each and every year to see our kids go on to get an education, okay? We always let them know, this is just the beginning. This is just one phase, but we're happy to be a part of that short four years of their life, all right? And they, like, we tell them, we're always here. We're always here for them until we're gone, all right? So we love each, every one of you guys. We thank y'all for all the work that you have put in, and let y'all know that we're always here for you guys, all right? Much love.
All right, thank you all. Item number five are public comments. If it's okay with the body of City Council, if we move that item to after the resolution. If there is a disagreement, please let me know that now, but if not, we'll go ahead and move that after the resolution item. So there will be opportunity to speak for public comments. It'll be done, but we're, because of the sum of the time that we take, we needed to get some presentations and things done real quick. So we're going to move on to item number six, our staff report to City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor, council members.
Good evening.
Good evening, again. The one item on the agenda tonight for consent that I wanted to briefly talk about is the, there's an amount of, not to exceed 25,000, and that is for ongoing litigation, O S T.
Okay. Thank you. We're going to move on to item number seven, our consent agenda. Is there a motion? So I see a motion on the consent agenda by Councilmember Brown Marshall and seconded by Mayor Protem Klausser. Seeing no one else on the queue, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you. Item number eight, resolutions. We're going to go ahead with 8A.
8A, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Missouri City, Texas, granting consent to Missouri City Management District Number Two to issue unlimited tax bonds in an amount not to exceed $7 million, $7.5 million.
Okay, thank you. City Manager Jones?
Yes, I just want to briefly point out that this item is in regards to the Management District Number Two. bonds by the, per section 3932.110 of the Texas Special District Code, they must obtain consent from council in order to move forward with this. They, the board, the Management District Board approved the authorization to advertise the sale of these bonds on April the 16th. And tonight, the board is presenting them before you for approval. The bonds are for 7.5 million dollars. And of that total, direct cost is about 5.5 million. And it's basically for water and wastewater infrastructure improvements along with acquisition of land. The other two, approximately $2 million is for bond-related expenses. Total 7.5 million dollars. It's my understanding that the Management District's attorney is here to address any specific questions that you may have.
All right, thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Boni, seconded by Mayor Protem Klausser. Seeing no one else on the queue, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you. Item 8B.
8B, a resolution of the city council of the city of Missouri City, Texas, authorizing the mayor to execute and the city secretary to attest an economic development agreement between the city of Missouri City, Texas, and Mo City Edition LLC pertaining to certain patio improvements to an approximately 2.8 acre tract of land located in Missouri City, Texas.
All right, thank you. We have a presentation by Herman Rodriguez, our director of Economic Development.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We are bringing up the incentive program application for The Throne Barber Shop and Cafe, which is a very innovative new business on Highway Six. And they're looking to apply funding towards a new concept for a barber shop and cafe with an outdoor space that's going to eliminate time for, or in between getting your hair serviced. The logistics of the spending or the reimbursement is 32,564.67, which is 75% of the reimbursement. The major components to that is the fencing and sound barrier, labor, supplies, a total of 43,419 with a net reimbursement of 32,564.67.
I thank you, recognizing Mayor Protem Klausser.
Yes, thank you so much, Herman. I think I saw the owner or the owners here. If you'll come up. Good evening. Good evening. If you will just, well, first of all, thank you for choosing Missouri City to open your business. I know, at least you, Mr. Redman, you're not a stranger to Missouri City.
Not at all.
But if you could talk to council and those in attendance about your business and tell us about your concept.
Sure. Thank you for having us. My name is Leland Paco Redman. This is my business partner, Jason Thomas, my other business partner, Corey Williams. As far as The Throne is concerned, it's a new concept that we have created. It's a barber shop, cafe lounge. And as the gentleman was explaining that, as far as the patio is concerned, we have decided to build out that patio along with our barber shop and our lounge and cafe as well to provide a space for our residents here in Missouri City. Jason and I are lifelong Missouri City residents. We live here now. I've always had a Missouri City address on my ID. So I'm very, very well aware of what's needed out here for professionals like ourselves. And we're just excited about it. We're about a couple of weeks away, if not one week away, from performing our final fire walkthrough. So we are excited. We're excited to present this business here in Missouri City and have you all come and join us and have a great time there. So does anyone have any questions about the business or?
Okay, so recognizing Councilmember Boni.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
How you doing, sir?
I'm good.
All right, thank you all for choosing, like Mayor Protem said, Missouri City.
Thank you for having us.
The land. You have another concept similar to this elsewhere?
We did.
Tell us a little bit about.
Sure. During the pandemic in July of 2020, Jason and I, we were, we had bought into an existing business that was very similar to the business that we are building now. It was a barber shop lounge out on the west side in Houston. And we bought into it and we were very successful with it. But unfortunately, our owner of the retail center decided to sell the strip center. So forced us to have to make an adjustment, which in turn caused us to come look out in Missouri City, which was obviously a blessing in disguise. It allowed us to build this, this concept from the ground up, not an existing business. So all of the lessons learned that we had from tech, from the previous business, we implemented in here. So again, we're excited for everyone to see the final build out. Again, we're weeks away. So yeah, that's pretty much the history behind it.
Thank you so much. And I think the other, are you going to be playing music outside on the patio? Or I'm just trying to understand what's going to happen outside.
Absolutely.
Because that was going to lead me to my question relative to some of the
Yeah, absolutely.
issues that, you know, businesses in that area have been unfortunately.
Absolutely. So we are very familiar with those issues. Part of the request for this bid was for us to add soundproofing to our patio. We do not have amplified sound on our patio. That was part of the requirements of us qualifying for the grant, so we do not. But we will have a lot of people on the patio, so there will be no voice noise, right? And that's not amplified sound. But we have done everything in our power to try and satisfy the neighbors around us as well as try to satisfy and provide a space for our patrons as well. Ultimately, I think we are here, understand that we're here to make money. This is a business. It's zoned as a business district and a business space. So we will do everything in our power to be respectful. And I think we've shown that for the past year as we've been building out. And we will continue to do that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, recognizing Councilmember Riley.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I didn't have any questions. I just really want to say thank y'all so much for bringing this concept and this entertainment business to Missouri City in such a prime location. I've been working with you guys and walking through step by steps. And thank you so much, Herman, for your delicate attention, you know, to and all the great customer service that you've been providing and working with, you know, The Throne and the business owners. And so I'm just, I'm just here to tell you, I'm looking forward to being a part of it. So just let me know when the day is open so I can stop on by.
I will definitely let you know. And you reminded us, we definitely want to say thank you to Councilwoman Klausser, Councilwoman Riley Garrett has also been very helpful with the Economic Development Committee. You've also been helpful. So everybody has really jumped in and helped us with any of the questions that we've had. We wanted to make sure that we complied and gave you guys everything that you asked for. So we feel welcome here. Again, we are Mo City. I won a state championship in 94. So, you know, I have one of those. So, you know, just to be here today was, I don't know if it was irony or not. I mean, I think we were, it was a reason why we were here to see that. So we know what this community is looking for. And again, we'll be very respectful and, and, you know, appreciate what we have here. So looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you, recognizing Councilmember Brown Marshall.
Thank you so much, Mayor. My question is probably more so for Ejoyce or city manager. Just a little more clarity on amplified noise versus voice noise.
Yeah.
Is there a difference between the two?
Certainly, and I can answer that question. Amplified sound is sound that is increased in volume using mechanical equipment. And so voice noise is just natural conversation, voice noise. That would not be considered amplified sound.
Okay, thank you. And my last question is, I really was not clear on, are we doing some type of noise?
Yes, we have a
Yes, so yes, we are.
We have soundproofing on our, on the fencing that we're installing.
I kept going through the whole report and I'm like, wait a minute, we don't find it.
And if you guys are familiar with that area, something to consider as well, something different that we are doing, and we put some thought into this, is our fence is a seven-foot privacy fence. So the soundproofing will go, so you can't see in. So that will help. You know, all of these things will be helpful in terms of drowning that noise out and absorbing that. So again, we've done everything that we can possibly do to try and comply. We don't want to run into some of the issues that some of our neighbors are running into while they try to run their business. But again, we are trying to look ahead and be proactive about these things.
Well, thank you for the investment.
Yes, thank you.
I want to make a comment that you guys have been very patient and everything, especially with all that, because that was a request from us that they did to adhere. And it was a little bit of a delay for them to get that done. So I wanted to thank you guys for that also.
Oh, thank you, guys.
Recognizing Councilmember Marulus.
Yeah, so Herman just stole my thunder. It came before the Economic Development Committee. Knowing kind of the current environment, we said, hey, how about sound barrier? Marcus came up with a great idea. And I want to say thank you for waiting and putting in a great solution. Paco, I'm happy, man.
Thank you, I appreciate it, man. Thank you all. I can't wait to invite you all over and we'll have a nice time, so.
I already got that seat reserved on the deck.
I bet you do, I bet you do.
Thanks, man.
I'm a fan.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Recognizing Councilmember Emory.
Yeah, thanks again for choosing Missouri City. Could you flash up the display of the, there you go. I mean, that's really unreal. I can see myself sitting at the bar.
Yeah.
I don't drink, but you know.
We'll have some iced tea for you there. No worries.
I mean, that's a great-looking concept and it sounds like you've had success in another part of Houston. So, you know, we look forward to getting this thing off the ground and, you know, you can hit the ground running. So thanks again for
Thank you all for having us, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just end it with this. Thank you for bringing to, coming to Missouri City. It means a lot to our, our community.
Yep.
And we look forward to, I'm glad to hear that you mentioned Jared, who's an employee in the Economic Development. So the fact that you mentioned him, that tells me that you're working very closely with that department. This says a lot about this program. So I don't have any questions for you, if y'all want to just sit for a second. But I do have something for Herman.
And thank you, absolutely. I reached out to you when this project first started with an email. So I appreciate your help in getting us started. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Herman Rodriguez, can you just talk about, so our resident understand what this patio program is?
Yeah, I mean, it was, it was established to complete four different objectives that we highlighted out. And it came, the objectives were driven a little bit by the, the funding mechanism. And they were to address the negative impact because of small, that the small business hit during COVID, to provide outdoor spaces for community interaction, to support local businesses, and at the end of then, to promote economic vitality, vitality within the Missouri City. And so I really feel that, especially when this came up, this was a great project for the, the program.
Sure. And follow-up question with that. Can any new businesses or existing businesses that is in Missouri City that wants to do a patio program or start, you know, would this, how do they apply for that?
The, the program is called the Restaurant Patio Program. There is a restaurant component, so there is that. If, if they are interested, they can send us an email to echodev@missouri city tx.gov, or they can go online. There's an application link online that they can go and start the application. And we get the application via the email. So they can apply, send us an email, we can send them the link, or they can go directly to the website, apply on the link, and we will get the application immediately.
All right, great job, thank you. There's been a motion by Councilmember Boni, seconded by Councilmember Riley. Seeing no one else on the queue, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you. Good luck, thank you. Item 8C.
A resolution of the city council of the city of Missouri City, Texas, finding that CenterPoint Energy Houston Electric LLC's application for approval to increase electric transmission rates within Missouri City should be denied. Finding that the city's reasonable rate case expenses shall be reimbursed by CenterPoint Energy Houston Electric LLC, finding that the meeting at which this resolution is passed is open to the public as required by law and providing notice of this resolution.
Ejoyce.
Yes, sir. This item is, follows you all's vote in April of 2024 to suspend CenterPoint's application to increase their electric transmission rates. This item simply denies their request to increase rates. The potential rate increase for residential users in this area is about a dollar and 25, but as you all know, 1.25 per month. But as you all know, the city is a part of the Gulf Coast Coalition of Cities. That group has hired an expert who has found that this rate increase, although it sounds like it's not a lot, in the aggregate, it tends to be a lot. So that expert has found that this request is unreasonable. And so this particular request is asking you all to deny CenterPoint's request to increase the rate.
Okay, sounds great. We have a motion by Councilmember Brown Marshall and seconded by Councilmember Marulus. Seeing no one else on the queue, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carries 6 to 0.
Okay, thank you. Now, we're going to go back to our public comments. City Secretary, do we have any public comment requests?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we do.
Okay.
I will call your name in numbers of three. And if you can please line up behind the podium, you will be allowed three minutes to speak. In addition to that, please state your name and your address, including your city, state, and zip for the record. And please be respectful and courteous to the council staff, other speakers, and to those in attendance at this meeting. Alina Gilani. Ziad Gilani. Abram Amid.
Hi, can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my name's Alina Gilani. My address is 4115 Admiral Court. My zip code is 77459. Um, that'd be, okay, awesome. My name's Alina, I'm 16 years old. Thank you for letting me speak today. But honestly, I'm not sure if my words will do very much. Because if the city council hasn't been moved to action after watching eight months of Gaz and men, women, and children being slaughtered, three minutes of me talking will probably fail me with this council too. But I'll try my best. Since October of last year, your constituents have been begging you to call for a ceasefire and to condemn Israel's genocidal assault on Gaza. Right now, the people in Rafa, the southernmost city in Gaza, are being starved and burned alive by bombs this country is helping to pay for. A couple of days ago, I saw an image of a baby who's beheaded during the Israeli attack on Rafa, a city that Israel previously declared a safe zone. This is simply unacceptable by all humanitarian standards internationally and in this country. For the past weeks, I've been, past few weeks, I've been in contact with a Palestinian-American student named Khalid, who is sheltering in Rafa. He's an American citizen just like us. He was born just a couple of states over in Mississippi. But unlike us, right now, he's afraid for his life. His home and university were destroyed, and he has lost many loved ones, including his grandfather. He lacks access to clean water, food, electricity, and medicine. Every night, I pray for his safety. All he asks is for this to stop. And you guys have the power to enact actual change. You guys have the power to call for a ceasefire, following the steps of other cities across this country, the power to take action. I know it's easy to act like this isn't a Missouri City issue. It's easy to look away. It's easy to act like we all aren't complicit in this genocide or to live under the illusion that a genocide isn't happening at all. But I hope that when you guys were elected, you all knew that being a city council member means you can't always take the easy way out. You can't always make the easy choice. You have to do the right thing for your constituents and for all of humanity. And the right thing to do right now is to call for an immediate ceasefire in Gaza as a Missouri City Council. Missouri City is a show-me city. I'm still waiting for Missouri City to show me that you guys will do the right thing. I know all of you guys are good people who have a genuine dedication to helping those around you. That's why you guys are in this position right now. And I know you guys believe in the principles of freedom and justice in our country. So please act on those principles for the sake of those suffering in Gaza like Khalid. Call for a ceasefire and make the right choice. Thank you so much for your time.
Hi, my name is Ziad Gilani. My address is 4115 Admiral Court. Zip code is 77459. Okay, so. Hi, my name is Ziad Gilani. I'm 15 years old, and thank you for letting me speak today. 36,000 people are dead in Gaza. 36,000 killed by the Israeli government. That is nearly one-half the population of our city killed with thousands still missing. Despite all of this, many of us still stay silent. Our taxpayer dollars are being used for the bullets that are killing innocent people in Gaza. Mothers, families, and children are being murdered by the very weapons that we fund. Hospitals are being blown up by the missiles that we paid for. Neighborhoods turned rubble from the bombs sold to Israel by our country, and yet we still stay silent. How are we supposed to feel okay and at peace in our own city when we do not know if our own council cares about the lives of tens of thousands? How are we supposed to feel okay when our own council does not seem to care if tens of thousands own council does not seem to care if tens of thousands of more innocents die in Gaza at the hands of Israel? We need to call for a ceasefire now and divest from Israel to show that we care, to show that it is not okay to murder tens of thousands at any repercussions, to show that we still possess the basic human instinct of empathy and compassion. Thank you.
My name is Ibrahim, and I'm 10 years old. In the last eight months, we have seen 62% of homes get destroyed in Gaza. Kids like me have been displaced to Rafah because their homes have been bombed to the ground. But now even Rafah is not safe for them. There is absolutely nowhere safe to go for 600,000 children of Rafah, and they are forced to live out of tents. Tents do not have running water. That means it will be hard for the children of Gaza to stay clean. Tents do not protect against the rain, heat, or cold. That means the children of Gaza will get sick. Tents do not protect against shelling armed missiles. That means the children of Gaza will not be safe. All children have a right to a safe, comfortable home to live in without fear of being killed or displaced from it. We all believe in this for ourselves, then why not for the children of Gaza? The whole world must unite together to protect, to protect the children of Gaza. Please play your, please play your part by calling for a ceasefire. Thank you for your time.
Azar Amid. Sarah Kokari. Sanya Kokar. As a reminder, please state your name and your full address for the record, and adhere to the three-minute time limit. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Azay. My address is on the form. First, I want to thank the city council for, yeah.
Please state your address.
119 Green Highway Drive, Missouri City, 77459.
Thank you.
First, I want to thank the city council for allowing us the opportunity to speak, not trying to suppress our First Amendment right like our neighbors in Sugarland are doing. Unfortunately, these are the times we live in where we have to commend our city councils for not trampling over our right to freedom of expression. So, let me start by reading a mother's account from a recent Rafah tent massacre, and I want you to imagine being her as I read this to you. "I left my hungry children playing in the tent. I hugged as I left them to find something to eat. I came back panicking when I heard the Israeli airstrikes on the tents. I found my six children who could barely fit in the tent had been completely burnt and became ash. My six children who couldn't all fit in my arms could now fit all in my hand like sand. I was hugging and kissing their ashes. My world, my six children, became the size of a handful of sand. No parent, and I speak this as a parent, should ever have to live through this. If burning children alive in tents in a refugee camp does not cross a red line, it's pretty clear that no such line exists. Remember the uproar about the fake news of beheaded babies spread by Israel? Here's an artistic rendering of the image of a beheaded child in Rafah massacre with second-degree burns. The real image is too painful to watch. That's why I printed this. There was great hue and cry on fake news of beheaded babies, but complete silence when it actually happened, with visual evidence available. We're the only nation that can end this nightmare, but also the only one that is consistently enabling it. Our responsibility to act is greater because of our culpability. But we are so grotesque in our humanity that we have Nikki Haley, a former diplomat and ambassador to the U.N., autographing these missiles that are bombing and killing and burning children with, finish them. America loves Israel. Where is our humanity? Are we blind to this? Are these not kids we see? So, we implore you to push for an immediate and permanent ceasefire, provisions for immediate humanitarian aid, to stop all funding and divestment in Israel, for the release of the Israeli hostages, as well as the thousands of Palestinians in Israeli prisons without cause, and to put Israel for, to trial for the trial for their crimes against humanity. Thank you."
My name is Sarah Coker. My address is 66 Big Trail, Missouri City, Texas. My zip code is 77459. Honorable mayor and council members, thank you for listening to my concerns and the concerns of Missouri City residents. I'm entering my sophomore year at the University of Houston. It's a very exciting time for me, and I'm eternally grateful that I have the opportunity to pursue my dreams. Thomas Jefferson wrote about this human right I am exercising. In our Declaration of Independence, he wrote that we are endowed by our Creator the unalienable rights of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Every child deserves the right to pursue education, to pursue dreams, and to pursue happiness. Unfortunately, young minds have lost this human right due to the hostilities in Israel and Gaza. Over 5,000 students, 250 teachers, and 100 professors have been killed. All 12 universities have been destroyed. More than half a million children do not have access to education. I ask you to please stand with the overwhelming majority of the world's countries, the overwhelming majority of the world's citizens, and the majority of our country's citizens for you, to pass the Gaza ceasefire resolution, which advocates for universal human rights for all of humanity. Thank you for your service.
Hello. My name is Sonia Coker. I live on 66 Big Trail, Missouri City, Texas, and my zip code is 77459. Honorable mayor and council members, I am entering my junior year at Ridgepoint High School, and I'm 16 years old. I, along with many of the other students at Ridgepoint High School, are extremely concerned about the lack of support for the children of Gaza and the lack of support for a ceasefire on the genocide going on in Palestine. We have been taught about the importance of human rights and the value of peace. We have been taught about the differences between right and wrong. We know integrity is standing up for our values. The United States of America is a champion for freedom and equality. Missouri City is a champion of diversity and acceptance. Our city's high school students are feeling extremely disappointed in our leadership for not standing for human rights, peace, and equality. This is important to our city because it affects how we will participate in our community in the future. For this reason, I ask you to stand with the students and pass a Gaza ceasefire resolution, which supports the end to a killing of all the innocent civilians, the innocent children, and the innocent babies of Gaza, as well as universal human rights for all of humanity. We ask you to stand with the voiceless. Thank you for your service.
Farrah Channan. Farrah Channan. Megan Hayes.
My name is Farrah Siddiqui, and my address is 45 Flamingo Landing Drive, Missouri City, Texas, 77459. Hello, Mayor Robin, and the members of the city council. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. I'm not an activist. I have no political ambitions, and I'm just a high school student. I'm here in front of you because at this point, I feel that as a human, I should speak up against what is taking place in Gaza. I'm not sure of what I can do, but I know that as an American, based on the values that I have been taught by my teachers, my parents, it would be inhumane for me to sit back and do absolutely nothing. I cannot simply enjoy my basic necessities of life, like water, food, clothing, and shelter, while there are innocent babies literally starving to death. There are innocent children whose limbs are being blown away, innocent children who are becoming orphans with no one to take care of them. And there are innocent children whose body parts are being amputated without any anesthesia. And I am not even talking about the suffering of the women and the elderly and what they are enduring. In my opinion, coming here and speaking to you is the absolute minimum that I can do. Honestly, I don't even understand why this topic even requires convincing to be able to stop what is going on in Palestine. Of course, what happened on October 7th cannot be justified. But what, but would you bomb an entire neighborhood if there was one murderer hiding, hiding in one of the houses in one of the neighborhoods in Missouri City? Would you bomb an entire school with the schoolchildren in it if there was a school shooter on rampage? What makes this situation different? Is it because it's a different group of people? Is it because they're remote from us? Or is it because of something else? Something else that we may regret later, both from personal and a political perspective. I'm not asking for money, not even asking something that requires courage or even strength. All I am asking for is the absolute minimum, which is to allow a ceasefire resolution for the sake of innocent children and women. Thank you so much.
My name is Megan Hayes. My address is 3310 La Costa Road, Missouri City, Texas, 77459. Good evening, mayor and council. I grew up in a home where my basic needs were not met, and where the people who were supposed to be protecting me were the people who were hurting me. I learned at a young age to be quiet and small, and to either ignore my needs or find a way to fill them myself. Because of this, I have been diagnosed with PTSD, and I often have a difficult time asking for help. When I stood before you a few weeks ago, after eight months of trying to solve a safety issue near my son's elementary school, I was terrified. My handsome voice were shaking the same the entire time as they are now. As soon as the meeting was over, I had city employees approach me, willing to help, and council members thanking me for speaking up. The next week, as my son and I walked to school, there was a noticeable police presence at the intersection where we had previously had issues. And two days after I stood there, three Public Works employees showed up to observe the situation with the traffic lights and the crosswalk signals. They changed the timing of the lights and the walk signal, and now my son and I and the entire community can cross the street safely. These results may have just been people doing their jobs, but I want you to know that to us, it felt like much more than that. To me, it felt like much more than that. I felt seen and heard and cared for. I got the message that this is a community where we take care of each other, where we protect each other and keep each other safe. This is a community where we can be heard and where we can ask for help. Having worked in public service myself, I understand how the public eye can often be glaring and the feedback negative. So, I wanted to come back here today and face my fear of standing in front of this group in order to say, thank you. You, along with numerous city employees, participated in making a real and positive difference for me and who everyone who lives in Missouri City. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes public comments.
All right. Thank you. And I just want the public to know that as you are seeing some of us walking in and out, we did, we do have a little situation going on. That's why it's not just that we're ignoring the public comments. Just want to make it clear. All right. We're going to go to item number nine, city council comments. We'll go ahead and start off with our large position one, Sonia Brown Marshall.
Thank you, mayor. I appreciate it. On tonight, I want to personally thank E Joyce, Ayamu, and the District Attorney's Office for tonight's ethics training. It was very helpful, and it was extremely insightful as well. I want to send a special congratulations out to all of our 2024 graduates, including my very own niece Faith, whom had an opportunity to graduate cum laude from Elkins High School right here in Missouri City. Our very own Marshall Jones, and I'm sure Lynn will acknowledge him as well, but just in case she doesn't make it back to the dais as she's attending to something pretty urgent, I wanted to send a special shout out to her as a mom, and to Marshall on his graduating. To the Marshall Track Team, along with my niece Faith and Marshall, congratulations to you all on going to college. That's a great big step. Quail Valley Proud, thank you, thank you again for the invitation to join you in your Memorial Day Parade. Had a lot of fun participating as a judge in the great costumes. It was a lot of fun. Jason and crew, thank you guys for letting me always come and yank a golf cart, because I don't really like to walk in the parade. And it was hot on that day. Lastly, I just wanted to kind of send a special shout out to a young lady. Really haven't had a chance to meet her yet, but I've heard some wonderful things about this young lady. Leukemia is a terrible childhood disease. I'm honored to have been able to share in a celebration for Elena, who was diagnosed in 2010, and she's now recovering very well. And I just wanted to let her know that I look forward to dancing with her one day, because I saw that she has some great dance moves on a video that was shared with me. Mayor, that concludes my comments.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and go to District B, Councilmember Jeffrey Elbon.
Yes, mayor. Thank you so much. I'll be brief. First of all, congratulations to all the winners of the recent runoff elections in both Fort Bend County and Harris County. Congratulations, and we hope and pray that you serve us well as members of those two respective counties. Also, attended a HGAC board meeting and looking forward to, you know, doing the Summer League, Summer Leadership Conference with the National League of Cities upcoming this week. So, thank you so much. That concludes my comments. That's it?
Thank you, E Joyce, for doing the training and for bringing in a guest tonight. Very informative. That's my comment.
Well, first of all, it's all already been said, but congratulations to the Marshall Track Team and the coach and all of the people that were instrumental in coming up with nine straight championships. I also want to give a shout out to Quail Valley Proud. They put on a bicycle, wagon, dog, and bike parade all through an area of Quail Valley. It's probably been, I think it's, we've had at least 20 to 30 of those continuously. So, it's a great time for kids to celebrate the Memorial Day. And finally, I'll take leisure with saying that my wife and I celebrated our 65th anniversary. On May 30th, a couple of days ago, I'm still paying for all of the things I had to buy her and take her. But after 65 years, it was worth it. And just as a side note, she was three and I was five when we got married.
Thank you.
We're taking you to jail.
And God bless Linda.
All right. Thank you. Recognizing, I'm Mayor Protown.
Yes. I want to say happy graduation to everyone who graduated, whether that's preschool, middle school, high school, college, with your masters, your doctorate, all that good stuff. It's a, education is a wonderful thing, and so I just want to wish everyone a happy graduation. And especially to my son. Many of you know my son is living life on the autism spectrum. Within the last two weeks, he got his driver's license, passed his test on the first try. He graduated in Michigan last week, and then less than 24 hours later, we were at his new college, Eastern Michigan University, and he registered for all of his college courses. So, I'm one proud mama. We did that this week. And so, yeah, I just, I'm excited about that. So, I spent my Memorial Day at the VFW 4010 in Missouri City, along with some of the members from Stafford City Council and some of the veterans, and we honored our fallen soldiers and also retired several of the flags, the colors. And if we can just say a prayer for our council member, Monica Riley. She's, she's doing okay. She, but I'm sure mayor might give an update later, but, so that's why we were outside. So, that concludes my comments.
All right. Thank you. All right, thank you, and I don't have much to comment on it either, I think everyone else spoke here. I do, I have received several emails and several calls from people pertaining to public comments that we have got going on, and I just wanted to thank our city attorney and our city leadership team for drafting a resolution that was out there for this particular issue that's going on. And I just wanted to make it clear, as people were confused as to what all of this is going on with City of Missouri City, while we're not international, we represent citizens of Missouri City when it comes to our streets, our trash, our public works, and everything else, our parks, all the other departments that we have, and I know for a fact that every member of this council is doing their best job moving things forward for City of Missouri City and its citizens. I also want to take this time to thank the staff for constantly making sure, addressing from every complaint that they receive to every compliment that they also receive to moving this city forward. So I just wanted to let you know that if, if anyone's interested in looking at what the resolution is, you're more than welcome to get with our city secretary or city attorney, and they will have that for you. With that, I will end my report. And item number ten, our closed executive session, the time is seven fifty-eight PM, and the city council will now go into a closed executive session pursuant to section five five one point zero seven one of the Texas Government Code, thank you all. The time is. The time, the time is nine twenty-eight PM, city council is back into regular session, and with, there are no, no new business, no further issues, no objections, the meeting is adjourned at nine twenty-nine PM, thank you all.